We will next have a report on our state report card from Sherri and Nelson.
Good evening. The purpose of this report is to provide stakeholders with information regarding accountability results for the Huron School District for the 2015-2016 academic year. We will begin by looking at the district level performance indicators. Federal law requires that ninety-five percent of students at the school district and state levels across every subgroup participate in the state assessment. This allows stakeholders to gain a more robust view of how public students across the state are performing. Huron had excellent participation in both the ELA and math portion of the Smarter Balance Assessment that was given to all students in grades three through eight and eleven in the spring of 2016. Student achievement is based on students' performance on the Smarter Balance Assessments in both English Language Arts (ELA) and math for students. Students with the most severe cognitive disabilities take an alternative assessment. The Smarter Balance is a single snapshot summative assessment designed to measure each student's mastery of South Dakota content standards in ELA and math. A student receives a scale score which falls into four achievement levels. Levels one and two are considered not proficient. Levels three and four are proficient and above, and proficiency means that a student is on track for meeting college and career readiness standards upon graduation from high school. Looking at this chart, you will see Huron students scored below the state average in both ELA and math on the Smarter Balance Assessment with regards to percent proficient. Academic growth is a new indicator for the 2015-16 report card. It's based on the student growth percentile model. In this model, every student is compared to his or her peers. Students are grouped with other South Dakota students based on their performance on the year one assessment, and then their scores for year two are compared to determine how much they grew. In this chart, you will see Huron students scored below the state percentage in ELA but exceeded the state percentage in math with regards to the percent of students at or above peer growth. Attendance points are awarded based on the percentage of students who reach at least a ninety-four percent attendance rate. All students enrolled in grades kindergarten through grade eight are included in the attendance calculation if they were enrolled in a school for at least fifteen consecutive days. Our students are below the state average and are falling short of the goal of having ninety-four percent of our students attend the school ninety-four percent of the year. The graduation rate is based on the number of students who graduate in four years and a summer with a regular high school diploma. The percentage of Huron students who graduate with their cohorts in four years and a summer is below the state's goal of eighty-five percent and the state's percentage. The completion rate is the percent of students in the most recently completed school year who have obtained a diploma or a JEB. This includes students who graduated outside of the traditional four-year timeframe, both early and late graduates. This also includes students who obtained an alternative completion credential before age twenty-one, the JEB. The Huron School District's completion rate is below the state percentage of students who either earned their diploma or a JEB certificate. The college readiness score is based on those students who graduated in 2015 who met or exceeded the border regions cut scores on the ACT or ACT replacer. Huron students scored below the state percentage of students meeting the designated benchmarks. SPI is used to determine accountability at the building level. The overall system is based on a hundred-point SPI consisting of multiple indicators to measure a school's performance. This system was approved by the federal government through the waiver process associated with No Child Left Behind legislature. South Dakota is transitioning to the new education law, the Every Student Succeeds Act. Therefore, schools have new SPI scores, but classifications remain those that were made in 2015. SPI indicators vary depending upon the grade levels. The elementary and middle schools are evaluated on student achievement, academic growth, and attendance. High schools are evaluated on student achievement, high school completion, and college and career readiness. Due to the passing of the new federal education law, the Every Student Succeeds Act, school classifications are frozen for the 2015-2016 school year. That means that Huron Elementary and Huron Middle School remain focused schools. Focused schools are schools which rank as among the lowest percentages of Title I schools across the state. Huron High School remains a progressing school. Progressing schools are schools whose SPI scores are above the bottom five percent but below the top ten percent. The majority of schools that do not accept Title I funds and are not exemplary or status schools are classified as progressing. So now we'll look at the performance indicators for each specific school. This chart indicates Huron Elementary students scored below the state average in both ELA and math on the Smarter Balance Assessment in percent proficient. To hold schools accountable, South Dakota has set unique school-level, district-level, and state-level goals called annual measurable objectives, or AMOs. AMOs are based on the overarching goal of reducing by half within six years the percentage of students in the all-students group and in each subgroup. This includes the gap and non-GAP groups who are not proficient. In this chart, you will notice Huron Elementary students fell just short of their ELA/AMO target. On the other hand, in this chart, Huron Elementary students exceeded their math/AMO target. One of the main components of the state accountability system is the use of a gap group, which consists of subgroups of students that have historically contributed to the achievement gap. The gap group contains students who are part of one or more of the following subgroups: American Indian or Alaska Native, Black, Hispanic, English language learners, students with disabilities, and economically disadvantaged students. Students who do not belong to any of these subgroups are part of the non-GAP group. The percentage of Huron Elementary gap and non-GAP students who scored proficient and advanced on the ELA portion of the Smarter Balance Assessment is below the state percentage. The percent of Huron Elementary gap and non-GAP students who scored proficient and advanced on the math portion of the Smarter Balance Assessment is below the state percentage. Looking at this next chart, you will see Huron Middle School students scored below the state average in both ELA and math on the Smarter Balance Assessment in percent proficient. In this AMO chart, you will notice Huron Middle School students exceeded their ELA/AMO target. And Huron Middle School students fell just short in obtaining their math/AMO target. The percent of Huron Middle School gap students who scored proficient and advanced on the ELA portion of the Smarter Balance Assessment nearly met the state percentage. And the percent of Huron Middle School non-GAP students who scored proficient and advanced on the ELA portion of Smarter Balance Assessment exceeded the state percentage. The percent of Huron Middle School gap students who scored proficient and advanced on the math portion of the Smarter Balance Assessment nearly met the state average. The percent of Huron Middle School non-GAP students who scored proficient and advanced on the math portion of Smarter Balance Assessment exceeded the state percentage. Looking at this chart, you will see that Huron High School students scored below the state average in both ELA and math on the Smarter Balance Assessment in percent proficient. In this AMO chart, you will notice Huron High School students fell below their ELA/AMO target. However, Huron High School students exceeded their math/AMO target. The percent of Huron High School gap and non-GAP students who scored proficient and advanced on the ELA portion of Smarter Balance Assessment is below the state percentage. The percent of Huron High School gap and non-GAP students who scored proficient and advanced on the math portion of the Smarter Balance Assessment is below the state percentage. In summary, the Huron School District is held to many measures of accountability. There is room for improvement as students in the district are below the state levels of achievement in almost every indicator of performance. However, Huron students exceeded the state percentage in math with regards to the percent of students at or above peer growth. And increasing attendance and graduation rates would improve the SPI scores for our schools. Questions?
Is this the first year we have that data or is there some comparison to that to where we were last year?
Carolyn, is your mic on? There we go.
I'll re-ask that question again. Is the, how do we compare to previous years or is this the first year we have the scores?
That's a good question. They changed the formulas slightly on how they awarded the points. For example, in the elementaries and the middle school, the points were for academic achievement and attendance last year totaling a hundred points. This year, they broke it down into academic achievement, growth, and attendance totaling a hundred points. So they both total a hundred points, but the categories are slightly different because you're getting credit for your growth now. So they do have multi-year data, but it's a little bit hard to compare because there's three categories instead of two.
Well, the main reason for the question, are we moving up? Are we staying the same or not? That would be the basic question. Maybe that's hard to assess.
I think the best slides up there that we showed were the AMO targets because you could see that we were, in most cases, exceeding our AMO target. There was a couple examples of where it fell below, but generally, I would say that we are getting better.
Could you talk a little bit more about the AMO again and maybe review again what is the AMO and how are they determined?
Yes. AMOs are based on the goal of reducing by half within six years the percent of students who are not proficient. So every seventh year, they'll reevaluate that, but they, what they want to do is take the number of students that are not proficient and cut it in half in six years. And so they have developed these target lines. If you follow, the blue line is our goal for the AMO. And then the gold line shows where we are at in relationship. So if we, after six years, have followed that blue line, then we would have cut the number of students that are not proficient in half. And so when you see something like this, there's a good chance that if we continued on that path, we would have a greater amount than half.
Show one that's slightly below, please. See, those are also following the trend. And what I hope is that this set of slides will become your baseline data and that we can have identical slides a year from now so that you can compare one set to another. We'll make sure that the board members have this PowerPoint, and then we hope to be able to parallel. And so if we're even more successful next year, maybe the gold line, at least it's staying with it, but maybe it gets above like it did on the earlier one. Like that. Those mean we're exceeding what the experts have said ought to be our ability to make a difference with students who are behind. So that line is the guide to know whether we're making progress or not based on what research shows is reasonable progress.
And I would add to that that this particular slide, we have a Department of Ed rep that works with us as school improvement. And when she met with the elementary administrators, she commented specifically on our Huron Elementary math because she works with quite a few different school districts. And she said that that was the first school that she works with, with school improvement schools, where she saw the gold line above the blue line in math. So it's a big deal that it's on that side of the line.
Could you go back to the high school ones though? Those are the ones I didn't look at close enough. Wanted to get another to look at.
Well, why are you doing that? So the blue line's not going to change in six years?
Right.
And so then every year, we'll kind of add on a part of that gold line and kind of see where that's.
I should take that back. I believe that's the case. I don't think it's a moving target. But I'd better not say that for sure without checking on it because sometimes there are moving targets.
Will we be able to follow that group of students? Because each year, we're going to have a new group of students doing this testing.
This would be...
I mean, as these elementary kids move into middle school, move into high school, will we be able to follow that group over six years? Or are we just going to get a new group of students each year in this data?
That's a good question. I'm not sure if this chart is the one that will follow the students or if we have to make our own chart to follow the students.
My guess is that we make our own chart to follow the students, and this will show how our schools do, a flash of our schools each year.
Because this is the plotted point of where we started.
So that's the English.
So this one is the English Language Arts.
And then what's the math? Is that the next one?
And this one's the math.
That's the high school math.
And this is the students that are scoring proficient or advanced, the percent of students that are scoring proficient or advanced.
So the lower ELA score may align with what we see on the ACT score to a certain extent.
You know, it's always good to look at more than one piece of data for different data points.
The students who are English language learners are, have to take this test after one year, is that correct?
Yes.
So regardless of what their actual access score is or how well they're doing with the English language, they have to take this test if they've been in the district for more than a year or actually in the country for more than a year?
So basically, what you're saying is correct, is that while they're learning the English language, they're being assessed in math and ELA. And those, the gap versus non-GAP reflect some of that because your gap group includes your English language learners and your economically disadvantaged. And so when you look at this one here, I think is especially impressive because you have your gap students scoring almost at the state average in ELA, English Language Arts.
And I was going to make that same, when I saw that chart, I was very impressed with that to have our middle school doing so well with the gap students. So those are the English language learners, economically disadvantaged, other racial minority groups fall into that category. And they're right on par with the state, and then our non-GAP group are actually exceeding the state, so that's great. Question from the audience?
They're also being compared to other gap students across the state, not the non-GAP students.
Yes, yes. So yeah, so they're comparing, I think apples to apples on that. So we are at least keeping, we're doing well with the other gap students. But I do, I think I got to point out, if you go to the high school English Language Arts chart, that one had me concerning, not so much for the gap group or for the non-GAP group.
Correct.
That's a very large difference to me for the non-GAP group between our school and the state. And so I guess I would be encouraged to hear more about, you know, what are thoughts on the cause of that large variation and what we're doing to address that because that's definitely concerning. And I think that's the correlation with the same chart. It's the only one that went down on the gold line as opposed to up.
Dramatically down anyway, yes.
And so I see that something happened. I don't know if it was in that year, that particular testing year or whatever, but I think we want to make sure we keep an eye on that.
And I think that's what I was trying to point out, that it seems to align with the ACT score and also with some of the other test scores that we have. They all seem to line up together in that same issue. And I would agree, we need to have action plans to try to address that.
Another question. With regard to the attendance, you said about seventy-six percent of our kids are meeting the goal of attendance ninety-four percent of the time. Is there any particular reason that we can find why so many are not meeting the attendance goal? Is there a lot of reasons? Is it illness?
The biggest thing is that with attendance, you can't just average the number of kids that come to school every day. And if you hit the ninety-four percent, consider it good because it's each individual student has to show up ninety-four percent of the school days. And so that averages out to about less than one day a month that they can miss. And so potentially, we could already have students that will not earn us points if they missed more than ten days this year so far. So if they've been on a family vacation for a week, that was five school days possibly. If they had influenza and they're out for two weeks, that's ten days that they missed, which means that as soon as they cross over that mark, you can't get those points back for that particular student anymore. So it's really important that we get our students to school and that's a whole community involvement. Getting, the importance of getting students to school because teachers can't do that by themselves. They're going to need the help of families and business owners and community people to stress the importance of coming to school.
I'd add something to that that we've learned just in the last few days. Haven't even visited with the administrators about it yet, but there is some specific inconsistency with what is or is not allowed in the recording of attendance across the state. And right now, there's some things that clearly are not uniform. In our system, if you're absent, you're absent. Now that's, if you're at an activity, that's an exempt. But if you're absent other than activity, it's an absence. There are schools that we've learned about that have, if you're absent for the flu, five days, that's one absence, okay? If it's all connected to one. Well, until there's some uniformity with that, I have a hard time with whether it's seventy-six percent or eighty percent attendance when I think we're doing it correctly, but we're certainly not going to score as high by actual recording. I think you're going to see some discussion this year as far as uniformity at the state level as to how is attendance going to be calculated.
So just to make sure I'm clear on that, here on school district, if you are gone five days with the flu, that's five absences.
That is five absences in the DDM system, which is what the state records. It's not necessarily, one long absence can be as far as for, whether they can still receive credit or not can be adjusted, much like I described. You could be out for a surgery and it's only counted one against you, but in the DDM system, all those days go into the system.
But there are some schools where not doing that?
Some schools is what, as Mr. Christopherson and I have learned, some schools, it's up to the individual school district to decide how it's going to be recorded in the DDM. We simply, if you're there, you're there. If not, you're not, and then it's exempt or absent. And so right now, ours is a, I hope I'm not misusing it, but a pure system of who's there and who's not there in the chairs each day. Now that, what they described is what goes on with DDM, we are doing with the individual students, so we're not punishing them for being gone. But in the data collection, that is skewed, okay?
Just one more comment on the attendance. While we appreciate parents calling in to excuse their students when they're absent, that doesn't excuse them from the count for attendance purposes, so it's just a convenience for the school, but it won't help us.
And I think that is important that we have a conversation on that, that the, now that attendance is part of our school performance index and basically every day a student is gone, you could possibly count against the school on its state report card. And that affects if we're a focus school or a priority school or anything like that, that has impacts on us and our budget. And so we have to start communicating to parents that vacations in the middle of school time are discouraged. They affect us. And whether it's an illness, a funeral, or a vacation, if they're gone, they're gone. It doesn't matter why. The only things that are exempt are school-related activities.
Right, and we honor those that are tax-supported and not supported, just for the record. So hockey club, baseball, we honor those the same, whether the taxpayers are paying for them or the individual parents are paying for them. So it's got to be an approved student activity. Mr. Redkey, am I describing that correctly?
But I think that's important that we have to be having that conversation being held more often so parents get to know that, that it's important to have a student in the district, at school every day because that counts for us.
I think that's one thing that also counts and maybe hasn't always been done the same way is if a student is gone for one period, say they have to leave early for a dental appointment or whatever it might be, that counts as part of a day, you know? And I think some people had thought if they stay a certain percentage of the day, it counts as a full day, and that's not accurate, so.
Not in the way we record it. We record it based on what actually happened.
So if they're gone for one period, is that a, you know, a tenth of a day gone or how is that recorded in the DDM system?
At our level, it's a fourth. I think at the middle school, is it an eighth or a tenth?
It's a decimal. It comes out as a decimal one.
I think it's an eighth is what I was told. So even doing a dental appointment or a medical appointment in the middle of the day, try and discourage that too. And I think part of that is all the research that's coming out about how having students in the district, in their school, in their seats is so beneficial to them, and that is a big part of education is actually being present. And we're really trying to push that, so I hope parents hear that.
One thing that stuck out to me was the graduation number. I think it was eighty percent of kids graduate, so that means twenty percent didn't, which on a two-hundred class, that'd be about forty kids. Are we tracking that on the reasons why those kids didn't graduate, whether it was academics or, you know, what the reasons were? And then do we break that down on gap and non-GAP as well? And then do we break that down on gap and non-gap as well?
Right, there's a couple things there. First off, that cohort is where we really, being done on time, right, is one of the major gaps. We're a lot closer when it shows everyone that we can complete. Am I saying that correctly, Sherry?
This one here is the graduation rate that's within four years at seventy-six point eighty-eight. And when you include all those students that get their GED or take longer, then we're at eighty-one percent.
Right. Which, which is still significant, but there's an interesting thing. If people move into the district, correct, including if a student moves into the district and is behind in credits, but they come into our district and then they leave, that's on us, even if we've only had them three months. So the more transient a student body that you serve, the more that it does affect that rate. So because when it comes to the student who's been in our system a long time, I, I'd be the first to publicly say if I'm, if I'm wrong on this, but we're at a much higher completion rate than eighty-one percent with the students who are here all the time. Studio, do you have a microphone that you could hand Mr. Radke? Okay. Graduation rate certainly lands on the principal, so.
We do track student by student and follow the reasons why we do, we accept a large number of students from area schools who hit their fifth year and area schools aren't equipped to get them through. We make an attempt, but if they've spent four years building up a lack of credits, oftentimes we take on those students and they don't make it through. Our philosophy is they're better off in a school than they are out, but that, that contributes to it too. We, we are now getting points for helping kids get their GED. In the past, we wouldn't, so we do take out of, out of, out of district kids who wanna work on GED prep because we have that, whereas other area high schools don't. That contributes to, to where we're at, doesn't need to be higher, absolutely. That's one of the things the counselors and Mrs. Connetson and I have been visiting about, getting those, tracking those kids. I stress to the, to all the classes, but especially the freshmen, if you're behind a half a credit after the first semester of your freshman year, you only have a one in five chance of making it to graduation. And I, I did several years of tracking just HHS kids, and if they were behind as little as a half a credit after the first semester of their freshman year, only one in five of those kids graduated. So we're trying to make a big push, not only to, to get those juniors and seniors who are behind on credits to the finish line through pride, but also focusing on the freshmen and sophomores, making sure that they don't end up behind on credits as soon as they start. But if you give me some time, I can, I can put together a student by student, how come they didn't make it list, if you wanted to see something like that.
Would you also agree that the mandatory eighteen-year-old law to drop out has an effect too? I mean, I would, I mean, I've had that conversation with our superintendent many times over the years, that when it was sixteen, these kids would drop out, they would find out the grass wasn't greener on the other side in short order, and they'd come back eager to complete their schooling, where now where they're stuck there till they're eighteen. Maybe they've sat there from sixteen to eighteen, I don't care, I'm gonna drop out anyways. They get out and then they're less likely to come back and, and then there, we've lost them, yeah.
I agree with that.
Any further questions on this report?
I'll comment if we're done with questions.
Then I think we're ready for that.
If you'll notice the success, academic success at the middle school, I've had teachers throughout the district say, well, now that you've hired Mrs. Nelson, are we going to have to do the middle school things at the other buildings? And my answer is, we have to perform the same level that the middle school is academically at the other buildings. So if you can show me that performance without Mrs. Nelson's intervention, that's fine, but that's what we're going after. Whatever, whatever we did to focus the middle school and the, and most of you have been on the board throughout to see it happen, we need to take those same basic principles and apply them to the others. So it, it does not matter to me how they get there, as long as it's with integrity. What matters is that they get there because we have, we have changed the norm with how they've performed at the middle school. A challenge at our high school that, that I think is gonna continue to have to have focus is that as language gets more sophisticated, all right, we tend to fall behind. And I mean even our top performers that will go to college and they'll have strong ACT scores in the math and science, but we do not use as much upper-level language skills that I think we're tested on as we get to the end of it. I think that the ACT test has shown a deficiency in grammar. And, and this, and this dates back to a belief of mine, sitting in the principal's chair, and both people in the, of your administrators sitting here clearly know this. It's not just teaching it, it's what is the tolerance level of every single teacher and what they accept as, as appropriate work handed in. That whatever report, whatever essay, is it a subject verb in a complete thought? Is it written with intelligence and purpose, or are we just scratching out? And so I see that as being a, a huge focus in what we tolerate as far as the, the use of our language skills.
Fair.
I don't wanna say anything here that I haven't said in the meetings. Sherry, anything else?
Any final comments or thoughts? Well, thank you very much for your report. Now, I'll turn it over to our business manager for his report.
All I have this evening is a general fund report. We're twenty-five percent of the way through this fiscal year already. So far for revenue, we've collected $2,535,000, which is about fourteen percent of our budget. Last year at this time, we were at $2,165,000, which is fourteen percent of that budget. We've expended $2,689,000, or fifteen percent of the budget. Last year at this time, we'd expended 3.7 million or twenty-three percent of the budget, but I've, as I've explained before, we're expensing the teacher contracts a little different this year. So September was the first full month of expensing our teaching staff. So this year's a little bit unique, but I think the budget is on track. The percent of budget expended went up almost eight percent for the one month, which is what it should do in one normal month. That's my report.
Any questions for the business manager?
One question, it's kinda off the subject there, but on the change orders on the projects we've been working on with the high school football stadium and the tennis courts, are those all completed? Are, are the liquidated damages done and taken care of?
No, we haven't seen that change order yet.
Okay.
That should be the next thing that we see, is another change order on that project that reflects everything and gets us the final contract price.
Okay.
We would expect, at the last meeting, you approved payment to them that paid the contract down to about $226,000. And of that $226,000, that we would still owe about $145,000, and that's going to be credited on a change order. So the final payment's going to be in the neighborhood of $70,000.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Mr. Hader, what I've seen, just observing that work, is that the position of the board's been very clearly articulated in how that's all gonna work out at the end. So I'm, I'm confident of that.
Okay. Thank you. And are they all complete out there? Is, I haven't been by in a while, is?
I believe the projects are complete, except for the practice board for tennis and soccer has not arrived or been installed yet. That'll go on the existing concrete, concrete pad behind the middle school. And the punch list needs to be reviewed one more time by the architect, but there was nothing significant on the punch list. I think the most significant item was the remaining windscreen around the tennis court, and that was completed last Friday.
Does that, this is, just 'cause I just thought of it, does the windscreen stay up throughout the winter or is it seasonal?
No, it's designed to stay up year-round.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for the business manager? Seeing none, thank you for that report. We'll now proceed with the superintendent's report.
Okay, several short items to visit about, first off, I, I have seen a, a real focus on teaching, learning, and achievement in the in-services, in the early releases, as I've tried to sit in on those. I was in on the end of one at the high school the other day that focused on language development skills for English language learners that the entire staff was in on, and, and we have outside trainers coming in to help with that. I'm glad to get a, a baseline of information that we can now look at from year to year to say, okay, from when we started, when we said we're gonna do things differently here, what does it look like? And, and I think we identified some deficiencies tonight that, that we can get after. The negotiations process starts with a friendly meeting in November in order to set the ground rules on the dates for negotiations, and so that will involve the two negotiators that have been assigned by the board and the HEA reps, and Rodney Freeman, and that takes place, I believe, on November sixteenth, but the letter will be coming out on that in the next couple of days. The legislators and school board will meet for a luncheon at Washington, and of course, we need to wait to see who's elected. And then as soon as we find out who's elected, we will invite them to join the school board. I believe that the, our first choice date is the second Monday in December, and our backup date, meaning if there's too many conflicts there, would be the first Monday in December. But we don't want it to get too close to the holidays and then the legislative season, so we try to take care of that right away. And your attendance at that's always been very strong, and we go to a different school each year. We're one of the few organizations that has the board members and the legislators in with the students. And so this year, it's at the Washington four-five center. Last week, I was in Aberdeen for the large school groups legislative lobbying meeting in order to look at what is the position of the large schools. The large school group has twenty-three schools, which represents now sixty-eight percent of the students in the state. And so in putting that together, there was a document that came to me today, which is the opportunity for the twenty-three superintendents to proofread it. Once they proofread it, we'll give the green light and we'll give that to each of our school board members so that you can go through where the superintendent's lobbying group is and the positions that we've taken on the different things, so that you can comment, react, et cetera, in the coming couple of months, so that we're well-prepared when the legislative seat, session takes place. And, and then just a reminder, I've said it in previous years, but the Huron School District position does not have to be identical to the large school group position. It's right in our constitution that first and foremost, we represent our own school districts, and then we collectively are together. And so sometimes there'll be a district that cannot agree to one of the positions, but you ought to be aware of what the positions of the large school group are based on the votes that were taken. And next Tuesday, the administrators will take their first look at the, reviewing the crisis and management plan. It's a nineteen-page document that we go to in a crisis, something we hope we seldom if ever use, and unfortunately, because, because of the reality of living, there will be crisis in every school district, and so planning those out when emotions are not involved is really, really important. It's something we do every October. Just wanted to update you on that. Unless you have any questions, that's my report.
I have a question. Have you heard of anything coming down legislative-wise, any, anything floating around out there? I haven't heard of anything yet.
I really, really have not. A lot of our positions will reflect being very, very supportive of what was done last year. And then, and then I think that you will, well, I know what you'll see on there addressed is, what would the schools like to see the legislators look at as far as the two-year averaging? Because over the course of, of a fifteen-year period, every school will go through some point when they dip in enrollment. It's just a natural phenomenon of that. And so I think that will probably be discussed a little bit. Other than that, I don't, I don't see a lot early. Okay?
Any other, any other questions? Thank you for that report. We'll now move to new business. Our first is on indirect cost rates calculation for federal grants. And I'll ask Mr. Christopherson to comment on this.
Okay, this rate, you'll see, you get to set it once every five years. Not that we get to set it, the state calculates this all out for each school district. The state gets approval from the federal government that this is what they're going to do, and this is what the rates are for all the schools. And then after that, they send it out to the schools and the school boards sign off on it. Mainly what it is, is a restricted calculated rate of 1.62%. What that really is used for is when we get a federal grant, like a Title I grant, you can take 1.62% of that and use it for your indirect costs, like grant administration. That's all that is. And that's all built into the grant management system on the state's website. It does it all for you. The unrestricted, unrestricted rate of 19.81%, I honestly don't know when that would ever come into play. We've never had a grant where you can do an unrestricted indirect cost rate, so I don't know. It's never been used since I've been the business manager.
Using strict guidelines on what those can be used for, if we get them. So what exactly are we approving then?
We're approving that for the next five years on all the federal grants we get, we can take 1.62% of that for administrative costs.
And so the federal government sets that rate and bar twice is it due accepted or or we don't get it? Or not take federal grants?
Pretty much.
Okay. Having heard that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second to approve the indirect cost rates calculation for federal grants. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, proceed to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. That motion carries. Our next item of new business is a request for weight room surplus property to be traded. I guess I'll ask Mr. Christopherson to comment on this also.
I can speak to that. Mr. Roder couldn't be here tonight. He, he and Zach Campbell put all this together. This quote that's in your board packet, I call your attention to the highlighted area, that is the old stuff in the high school weight room that we're requesting to declare surplus and trade in. There's the values that they'll give us for it, just not a lot of dollar value there, a little over a thousand dollars maybe. And the, this weight room equipment is being funded by the generous donation from Jack Links that was accepted during the school year last year of approximately $40,000. This is the first expenditure from that donation, which is going to be in the neighborhood of $21,768.
So the, the motion would be to declare those items in yellow as surplus property and allow them to be traded in?
Yes.
I would make that motion.
I'll second that.
There's a motion, a second to declare the items listed in yellow on this sheet in the board packet as surplus property and allow them to be traded in as part of this purchase. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. That motion carries. And then next is introduction on the conflict resolution, sorry, is this the?
Yes.
Conflict disclosure, not conflict resolution, conflict disclosure. So this is.
Introduction to the policy.
Yeah, introduction to the policy. This is A, it would be AH, and I guess, would you comment on this?
I, I think it reflects what we're trying to do and reflects the best advice we've had from the Attorney General. Kelly, if I'm misstating that?
This policy came right from the Associated School Boards of South Dakota. This is what they suggest each school in South Dakota adopt, and along with the about six-page And along with the about six-page policy, you also have the two exhibits, which are the request for a school board waiver, AHE one, which we have been using. And then the form AE, AHE two, which is, uh, authorizes the waiver after the board approves it. The board president signs off on that, that it was approved, and it's filed in the superintendent's office and filed with the auditor general and peer.
That form AHE two, is that the language that we need to say on our motion? We were discussing before?
Yes.
So maybe if we included that form then with future waivers already filled out, we'd have it with us in the packet?
And I probably actually have one of those in my documents to be signed here. These are usually available here for me to sign right after we approve them, so.
It was in there, you could reference it.
Yeah.
We'll probably, uh, just add this language to the, each agenda. Have it right on the agenda, so whoever makes the motion has the language in front of them.
This whole conflict disclosure is one item I believe will be revisited in the legislative session this year.
Yeah. Yeah.
That a lot of unknowns that came about after the last session and.
Yeah, we, we as a district are definitely erring way on the side of.
Yes, and that's where we should be going.
Disclosure, even when it's probably not under the necessary end of the law, so.
We may be amending this later in the year, but.
Yeah.
For now, it looks like a, a good policy to begin with.
Yeah, so if that statute is, if it's amended at the next legislative session, we can come back and amend the policy. This is just introduction and so it'll be in for first reading.
Good.
And then a second reading. Okay. Uh, unless there's no further discussion on that, we'll move on to item D on our new business, introduction of the procurement guide for federal grants. And I guess the last Mr. Christoprasen to comment on this one?
Okay. The, uh, I'll give it to you in a nutshell after I explain just a little bit of the background. There are also sorts of federal guidance out there. You see them cited sometimes in the audit, by the auditors, that they're doing an A-133 audit, that there are cost principles in circular A-87. All of that stuff is federal rules that are published in the, uh, Federal Register and usually have a CFR number. What the Congress did was kinda wrap all them up into one new super circular, they called it. Inside of this huge document of all these rules, it gets into how to procure things when you're using federal dollars. And one of the requirements is you have a procurement, uh, guide so that your organi- people in your organization know what to do. I kinda got a template for this and, to get me started, and then I put this together. And all these things that are in here, I think need to be in here by, by law, so that if we ever get a, where this'll come up is if we get a federal program review, like a Title I review, and they come in with their checklist, one of the things I guarantee you is gonna be on the checklist is do you have a procurement guide for federal awards? I want us to be able to say yes when they get here. So this is my first try at it. And really, the, in a nutshell, what this is all about is described on page five of this document. When you're going to make a purchase with federal dollars, there are three kinds of purchases depending on the dollar amount. And, uh, you have a micro purchase for anything that's under thirty-five hundred dollars. And then between thirty-five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, that's a small purchase. And anything over twenty-five thousand dollars is a large purchase and has to be bid, formal bid process. So, there's nothing new there. We always do a formal bid process on everything over twenty-five thousand dollars. Anything between thirty-five hundred and twenty-five thousand, really what's new i- there is we must obtain a price quote from at least three places and have it on file. We're probably, we weren't doing, officially doing that before. But that large of a purchase with federal dollars is very rare. The only one I can really think of on a regular basis would be the Perkins Grant. The Perkins Grant is used at the vocational school to buy the welders, to buy the woodworking equipment, the automotive diagnostic-type equipment. That's the only time we're get- even getting into that range with federal dollars. And I know that, uh, Jolene oversees that at the high school and she has been following this this year, and we have some quotes on file. So then what you have left is most of the day-to-day purchases, anything up to thirty-five hundred dollars. And that's called a micro purchase. You can just go out and buy that. The main rule there is spread it around the town. You're supposed to try and purchase equally from all the vendors that offer that. So if we're going to buy paper, we should buy paper from all the places that sell paper and we should try and spread our business around when we're using the federal dollars.
Can't just get the best price?
I think if you wanna go to the trouble and get three bids and have them on file, three quotes and have them on file, then you buy from the place that gives you the best price. If you don't wanna take the time to get three quotes and you just wanna go get it, then you're obligated to spread your business around equally.
Okay.
Just trying to be proactive with this guide and, uh, stay ahead of the rules.
So this is also, again, also on for introduction. We'll come back for our first reading and a second reading in our next meetings. Any other discussion on that item? Seeing none, that concludes our agenda for today. Uh, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. It's a motion, a second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no. Motion carries. We are adjourned.